As a member of the League for the Voters, it's a pleasure to welcome you here tonight. The first of two debates, this will be the Board of Education for the City of New London. Following in about seven fifteen will be a debate for the candidates' city council. A great deal of preparation has gone into this debate, as we can imagine. I want to thank Tammy, who's here at church and who are organizing for us. And thank Dick Robinson for the sound system. Thank Bob Stoller for our video, so that this can be available to everyone on YouTube and on our website tomorrow or soon thereafter. See how late Bob can stay up tonight to get that ready. But it does take a bit of effort, doesn't it, to make a City of New London even better than it already is? And so for that, I really want to thank the candidates for being here tonight. I know that, or I can only imagine, that it's not easy to run for office. And I thank you all for putting yourself out there and for agreeing to participate in our democracy and in our school system, which is so important. There are some guidelines that we follow, and the candidates have agreed to these. We ask the audience members to refrain from any vocalizations or applause during the debate, although it's most welcome at the end of the debate. The order of speakers has been determined by chance ahead of time. Each candidate will get a 60-second opening statement. After that, I'll ask questions in order. The first question will be asked of the first three candidates. They'll get 60 seconds to answer that question. After they've each answered for 60 seconds, the three candidates who have not addressed that question can choose to raise their hand and speak for 30 seconds on that topic. And they can get 30 such comment periods during the course of the evening. So each candidate gets the same amount of time over the course of the evening. And then each candidate will get 60 seconds for a closing statement. After the debate, you may linger and follow up questions with your candidates afterwards here. This will be recorded, and we ask everyone to respect the copyright of the recording and not use sound that's from this for campaign purposes or any other purpose. If you're going to show this, it should be shown in its entirety. And I'm sure it doesn't need to be said here, but we always say that threats of violence and law can't be tolerated, foul news can't be tolerated, will be grounds for terminating the debate. So without further ado, let's get the evening started. I'm going to call on, we're going to start with opening statements. And Frank Silva, you chose the word ed, so you get to come up to my earphone. Please welcome Frank Silva. Well, actually, no, it was.
Good evening, and thank you very much for being here today. My name is Frank Silva, and I'm running for organization for the City of New London. And I am proudly honored to be here today because it's an opportunity for me to serve the city. I've been here for the past 20 years of my life, and within 20 years, I have been involved in community service, nonprofit organizations, and advocacy for youth, families, and children. And I believe that I will have come to this position because there is a need for more Latino people who are always in the city, many more people of color who are always in the city. And we want to have people that understand the systems of this work and have a passion for mental health advocacy, people who are in need of services and nonprofit work and all that are about. Why would I want to run? Because a city needs people who have entered the political system and employ that now want to come back and do it. That's the reason why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank Silva. The next speaker is Keith Kimball. Keith?
Evening, everyone. I'm in London for 30 years. My daughter goes to Jennings School. She's a third grader. And I wanted to run for Board of Ed because I have the time. I'm retired now. But more importantly, I want to improve the communication between the district and families as a parent. It's very important to me. And as a resident that's interested in the health of my community, I want to see more funds, more equitable funds going to our schools and to our students. New London has 200 districts approximately in Connecticut. New London pays per student in the bottom 50. That's got to change. Unlike other school districts in Connecticut, though, our student population, 85% is in poverty, 3% ESL, ELL. So we have a lot of special needs that we need to pay for, and we're not getting much money. Hopefully, I will be able to change that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Keith Kimball. The next speaker is Danny Cruz. Danny?
Hello, everybody. My name is Danny. I'm a different captain in London Board of Education. I'm also a recent graduate from the high school, passed 2021. I'm really in London Board, but I think it's important that we have recent graduates or at least young people on the board. They've made decisions for the students that are in our schools right now. I've attended London public schools since kindergarten, and I've graduated from London public schools. While my time on the board, I've been working on bringing the cost of funding to our classes, making student voices a part of our conversations and part of decisions that we're making because ultimately, if the schools aren't theirs, we are educating our students, and I think that they should be part of our conversations. I'm also going to try and improve the communication that is between the schools and our students, our partners, and our parents. I think parents should always go home to their school. And I think that one, if you do a better job, it will do a better job in improving the communication between the schools and our parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny Cruz. The next speaker is Elaine Maynard Adams. Elaine?
Okay, then, thank you to the League for the Voters and to both the candidates. First, I hope that you know our teammate, Kevin, has a legal commitment to him and is unable to leave here, and our teammate, Yana, has assistance from the other and homeowners from the coast. I'm a former resident of New London. Public education is a great philosophy. I am a product of public education, attended New London Public Schools, graduated from New London High School, University of Connecticut, raised a child through our school system. And I believe I've done well, and I believe in particular, for those of us who have done well, we have the responsibility to do good. I believe in raising the bar, raising the standards, and ensuring equal access to public education for the children of New London. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine Maynard Adams. And the next speaker is Brian Dowdy. Brian?
Hi, my name is Brian Dowdy. I'm seeking reelection to the Board of Education. You have heard of Bobby Smith? Because you pulled your stuff. Okay, I will put it back.
No, it is required in non-renewables.
I'm a parent, and I love the way that there's a board with you. I re-reelected Board of Education two years ago because I got an answer I did not like, and it really basically fired me up. And I was hoping I could make a difference, and I think I have over the last two years. And people are just saying, well, you're accomplishments. And I have a few. Over the last two years, I've worked on committees that got the shovel down for the high school, gathered any older construction projects. We opened a new parts unit at the high school, which includes a gym, culinary cafeteria, administration, and a gym in September. I chaired the facility and program design committee, which guided non-lapse movement and commissioned enrollment study to determine the future use of our facilities. And lastly, I worked with the Commissioners Department, which brought back 15% of the entire state of Connecticut's funding to New London and to the rest of the conversation.
Thank you, Brian Dowdy. And the last speaker for the opening is Jeffrey Hart. Jeffrey?
Thank you. I'm Jeffrey Hart. I'm currently the vice president, and I'm also the parent of three children in the London public school system. The youngest one just started 3K. And, you know, I've thrown down my roots here in my managing very, very long time. So I just have no choice but to make the public school system the best it can possibly be. I re-reelected because I was working on issues like transportation. And again, one's giving a taste of that this year with the shortages, how, you know, scary it is when you don't have the information you need or you don't know how your child's going to get to school or where your child is. So I understand, you know, the day-to-day things of the right to be a community advocate for the other students to be able to enjoy. So I answer your vote. I'm going to go with the same thing.
Well, I have prepared questions, but we also accepted questions from the audience as they came in. And so to group number one, this seems to be really important to the people over here tonight. They're focusing on inclusion issues. But there was a position approved for a DEI director, but it wasn't filled. And they're concerned about students feeling included and especially English as a second language student. So, Mr. Silva, for 60 seconds, how will you handle diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools?
I believe diversity, inclusion is something that we have to know of in the draft because I am from a, somebody who has been victim of not being included, not being in place, I feel, there. So I would be present and will listen to the voice of those people who have been victimized by not being included in the conversation or not being present in that situation. I think that the idea of not having programs and areas aligned, but everything goes through and goes present while there's a language is highly important. And it's also important to be able to hear what parents have to say about this. I think the decisions sometimes are being made without having any role being present. So one thing that needs to be voiced is that if we're having the meeting decisions, that before those decisions are made, parents and students have a choice to hear all those choices we may make. I also believe that when we are talking about training and talking about ideas around inclusion, we need to have training based on all those aspects.
Okay, thank you, Frank Silva. The next speaker is Keith Kimball. He has the same question to you for 60 seconds.
Thank you, and thank you all for asking that question because it made me smile. It was definitely something I would be talking about tonight. The CEI position was frozen in July, and I don't believe the Board was consulted on it. But there were multiple advocates from qualified New London people who had a history of being of youth. So that's one of the first things that I want to ask if we elect it. But as far as the ESL, ELL, that's also extremely important to me and my family. My wife's family, my wife is Cuban. I grew up in an Italian-American, almost speaking Italian and English. And we have a 25% student population is ESL, ELL, like I mentioned before. 3% of our budget goes to serving that particular need. So I want to see, I do want to see a CEI hired. I want to see more funding for ESL, ELL. I want to see the full language program brought back. There is no conflict in the New London CEI program with that.
Thank you, Keith Kimball. And then Danny Cruz, the same question. 60.
Hi, so I would along with Keith agree. I think, you know, I have the same question of why that position hasn't been filled and the position is almost at the point of being filled. As a student, when that position was posted, I was really excited because I am a student of color, every person of color in this community. And we, in London, have a big population of many diverse backgrounds. And I think it's important that we have someone in that position serving the students' needs and serving staff members as well. So the very first question that I'm going to ask as well is where is that position? Who's in that position and how is that position being filled? I think, you know, London can make great strides and successfully have somebody in that kind of position along with training for our staff members on how to deal with situations, both students or dealing conversations in general on classrooms. It's important to continue to have somebody in that position. And I believe it's important to have somebody in every school that is doing that in that community. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny Cruz. So the next question is going to go to Elaine Maynard Adams. And it is bullying and lack of respect occurs in schools, targeting students as well as teachers and staff. As board members, how do you know how much bullying is going on in schools? What programs are in place to address school safety? And how do you judge your success? 60 seconds.
I'm a lot for 60 seconds, so I want to talk quick. We do have, all of our students have access to a recording room that's available to their ear, telephone app, computer application, whatever. They are able to quickly record incidents and pull them. We do have a number of other issues going on in schools right now. There's a huge focus, in particular this year, on issues surrounding student social and emotional and mental health, and certainly bullying is one of them. We have increased in our social workers. We've increased in our intervention levels, interventions, as well as coaches who work with our students and who also provide assistance to staff and families when they need it. How do we know? Are we measured with that fitness? I think we have built the data before, during, and after. We tend to be pretty data-driven in public education. So if we see that incidences, the number of incidences is probably down, then we consider doing something for that. And if we see that that is not the case, then obviously we need to be well aware of it.
Thank you. And then Brian Dowdy, same question.
Elaine, you've got a lot in here in 60 seconds. I don't think she eventually, one of the things we have is we've been anonymous for or we'll say we're parents, but care to whoever can report when there's an incident in school. Additionally, we have to make sure all of our teachers and staff are trained to deal with these situations. And I mentioned earlier, the Commissioners Department is part of that is providing the training for our teachers, who then can eventually become the trainers and then a triple staff. We have a very young staff right now. A lot of this COVID-related trend to recruit and keep teachers is a huge problem. And Thursday, our teachers' contract will be up. I'm hoping that we move forward, and we'll have a lot of more competitive contracts. We can bring in more experienced teachers to deal with the bullying or other issues in the classroom. But right now, it's getting our teachers trained so they can become the trainers and lead the way for a little.
Thank you, Brian Dowdy. And then Jeffrey Hart, same question.
Thank you. The first time I ran with bullying was my oldest in first grade on school bus. And so it occurs to me that it's very difficult for a bus driver to control a bus and drive safely at the same time. I think if you ask any rational person, it should be monitored on school buses. Now, we can't afford to do that. No one's suggesting we afford to staff that overnight. But I think that's a number of things we can do if we own our bus system as a city. We can instill our values to our employees. We could enforce our policies and not have to go to a vendor. And I think there's an appetite for that in the community. The other thing I am concerned about is I made a motion in the past to create a derivative security position when we eliminated the SRO. And I had to see action on that, so I do want to see follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey Hart. Okay, now let's go back to that 30-second rebuttal that I offered you in the beginning. On that first question about DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, is there anyone in the second group who would like to take a 30-second remark on that? I forgot to ask you that. Okay, now on the second question on the bullying, is there anybody in the first group who would like a 30-second remark on that? Okay, Frank Silva, 30 seconds.
Thank you. I think that we've all, as we do, or in what they have said, that I think this is a common to view, being more of an issue is that the idea of how the students are being affected needs to be investigated, needs to be reviewed, and the effects, in the long-term effects for every single student in the classroom. So this has to be a plan, how we are besting this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Silva. Okay, so we're back to the first group. Oh, you can do my foot as well. Keith Kimball, 30 seconds.
It just occurred to me, as someone who also suffer a lot of bullying at school, but bullying is often racially motivated. So I would like to see the board and the administration attend any rate of reinforcements. I certainly would be willing to.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Okay, so we're back to the 60-second question now for the first group of three. What is your response to conflict? How do you work with people who have a different point of view than your own? And so Frank Silva, that goes to you first.
Thank you. For the last nine years, I've been working as an advocate for men who are affected by violence or violence offenders. So I spend 14 hours of my week working with people who have a different view and a standpoint, men who have been in the force system and people who have been affected by violence. So I have the training to be able to mediate with conflict, and I have the ability to be able to find ways we can find a solution in a way that is safe, that is manner, and that is equitable for all the people on the road. I believe that when we have the idea of understanding everybody's points of view and finding common ground, we can find forces. I am not a person who is conflicted. I am very positive on that. I just want to find solutions. So if I can find a solution and I can be a part of that solution, I would like to be engaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank Silva. Keith Kimball, same question. 60.
Well, since I'm a talker, I like to sit down with people and hear what exactly they've got in stake and where our differences are and where we can find common ground. But if we're talking about how we resolve conflict in the district, particularly with students, I would like to provide them with more opportunities of construction, free time together, things that are team-building, things where they have an opportunity to face challenges together, which they're going to disagree on. Our children have the ability to learn productive ways of handling conflict, but they have to be given the sandbox to do that. And of course, I also want to see some experts, you know, maybe position a school to lead that charge. But we don't need people directing people how to solve conflict. We need people to have opportunities in safe settings to learn how to do that themselves. And our children can do that.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Danny Cruz, how do you work with people who have a different point of view than your own?
So I work with people every day. I work at the overheads for the club or as a resident there. So I work with the community in many different ways. And I handle conflict all day as well, whether that's with the customer or in the ambulations at the overheads. I tend to take a step back if I don't agree with someone and just like try and evaluate the many different positive problems that has to be in the conversation and, you know, try to come to an agreement with them. I mean, I think it's really important. One thing that I want to do in my time on the board is to continue to improve the conversations that are happening in our schools. I think it's important to have sort of conversations in our schools with our teachers, with our admin, but most importantly, with our students. I want to improve our PIS programs, or positive behavior intervention and support. So I think that that will break the narrative building to our schools where, you know, I can help with leading a conflict, but also students can do that as well and staff members. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Danny Cruz. Would any of the first group, the next group, like to comment on that? Brian Dowdy, 30 seconds.
As a board member, one of the things that the other board members have had issues with is community and the city council, the mayor, and things over the past. I see Reon here, I see James here, I see lots of prospective councillors and the mayor. And this board has picked up the phone, texted, emailed, talked to people, figured it out. We don't always agree. Just work. Communicate. Figure out a way to move forward.
Thank you, Brian. Any else in that second group who want to talk about that? Okay, Jeffrey Hart?
Sure, thank you. Just briefly, to be the contrarian, I understand what people are saying about conflict resolution. It's very important. I use that every day, including many of my colleagues out of the audience. But it's important to live in certain conflicts. It's important that you don't resolve conflicts by rolling over and letting people buy on you. And that's, you know, that means sometimes pushing back, punching up at that state or the commentators when they're in Congress.
Thank you, Jeffrey Hart. Okay, the next question's going to come to Frank Silva again. No, I'm sorry, Elaine. Thank you. I'm just checking. What question goes to you? What are vehicles for parents to be involved in their children's education? And are they working? How do you know that parents feel comfortable and welcome to your child's school? And this goes to Elaine, nine years out of work, but you thought it was hard.
So the same person doesn't go first?
Sure, go ahead. Brian Dowdy, 60 seconds.
Communication is so important, and I don't know if it's working. I mean, obviously, right now, with COVID, it's incredibly hard to get parents and bring them into the school to work with their kids. I said it in the debate the other day. When I grew up, we'd come, we'd have papers at home on a backpack, and we maybe saw things in the newspaper and saw how everybody knew what was going on. Right now, we have a million ways to communicate, and no one knows what's going on at all. So we have to communicate better. One of the things, that obviously, the New London Public Schools is coming over the half. Reon's got a phone. Other people are texting while we're here. Hopefully, that will get more information out there. The only way we're ever going to know if we're getting well is if parents are coming to us. Unfortunately, during COVID, I use the phrase, our board evidently lost. Which all that we need to was stolen. We didn't have a little side of our conversations to know if we're doing things correctly. So hopefully, we work with the app, and as we exit COVID, we get a lot of feedback to see if we are succeeding.
Okay, so is that Jeffrey Hart's answer mine then? It's all yours.
Thank you. I think one of the vehicles that we try to get parents to use are these various apps that track school progress and assignments. And having, you know, too many of them has been a problem for a long time. Too many channels of communication, and it's sometimes difficult to just drop in and have casual communication with the teacher when you're lying. So, you know, my colleagues were actively describing the buckshot period of communication. I think that Facebook and social media can tailor a message to an individual, can figure out what channel they're getting the message on and which ones they're not. Maybe we could do less communication, but do more effective communication. I don't know how to approach that, but, you know, we have begun consolidating some apps, and it just takes a more sophisticated approach than what we're using right now.
Thank you very much, Jeffrey Hart. And Elaine Maynard Adams, very clear.
So several things, several things come to mind in terms of what we're doing to improve our communication with parents. There's a pretty big outreach effort online right now. We have a supervisor who is focused on working with the families of special needs children who are not English-speaking. That's been a kind of a serious problem for several years. We now have some who is focused about doing that. Parent-teacher conferences, another great example. It used to be watched by the evening, and we recognized that the many parents that work at night, that just doesn't work. So parent-teacher conference times are now available pretty much throughout the school day in lieu of to the evening. Open houses, where we attempt to recruit parents for various district-level or school-level communities. Parent-teacher organizations are active in the city in all of our schools. organizations are active in the city in all of our schools. Houston clubs at high school, we are typically parent members who work in part to recruit. So we're doing a lot, but we recognize that there's one to do.
Thank you very much, Elaine Maynard Adams. Would anyone from the first group like to answer to that question? Okay. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Danny, Danny Cruz.
So I think communication, it's important that we reach out into the community, that we go out into the community. I see a lot of schools that we host a lot of parent engagement, days and nights, but it's inside the schools. I don't think a lot of parents can get out into the schools because of transportation. I think if we want to reach parents, if we want to reach students and make a difference in their lives, then we need to be out into the community and going out into their community. And so during my time on the board, I'm going to push that we reach out and we go into the community. We're doing that. We are on the edge of it. We should be out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Okay, so the next question is going to go to group one. And this is, what experience do you have within the realm of education? How would that experience inform your decision making about our public schools? So, let Frank go first or would someone else say? Okay, Keith Campbell.
Well, first of all, like I said before, I was raised by teachers. My mother was a special education teacher for the Jersey and Pennsylvania schools for thirty years. I spent a few years with two former board members on their nonprofit public education advocacy group as their treasurer, Myrna Martinez and Ronald Sellar, Republic Ed. And I got a deep, deep education on policies and faculty policies in public schools. But I would bring my experience as a staff accountant for corporations in New England County to, it's just better to analyze the efficiency of our budgets and if it's meeting, if the money that we're spending is serving the population that we needed to. So I'm going to combine my love for education and raise and a family of educators and with my professional experience as somebody who is very good at analyzing finances. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Campbell. And then Danny Cruz, sixty seconds.
Well, all right. So like Keith, my family members have also been in education for a while. My grandmother's been a teacher for over thirty four years and my mom works with young people, works with young people in the community as well. I, you know, I want to bring forward, you know, being a recent, being a recent student on in the hallways of our schools and being able to see everything that's going on in our schools, be able to then make improvements as well on the board. I think it's important that I also have the connection with the young community, you know, people that are servants, are to be able to hear them, listen to them, be able to take action on situations or serious issues that they have in their schools as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny Cruz. And Frank Silva, sixty seconds.
Thank you. I come from a family of educators. I was raised in a family of educators. My parents were educators in the early game. We were in a school system that was not working. And after my parents being present in the school every single day, they decided to pull me out of school and home school. So I was a product or a student who had to be home school because the system in the school that I was was not working. And I'm fortunate that I have that experience, but I know many people who don't have or are less lucky enough to be able to have that experience. So I want to be able to change that for those people. My sister is currently employed for the city of Hartford, the oldest school system, a D S L teacher, and her experience while they're dealing with, and we're not apart from there. So we're, I want to be able to ensure that the experience that I have is employed and that we're putting it through this correctly. There's great things that are happening in our school system right now. There's certain things that are not clicking and it's because of not connection. And I just want to make sure that we start connecting. I look, COVID has stopped now. We need to connect.
Thank you, Frank Silva. Would anyone from the second group like to address that issue? Elaine Maynard Adams, thirty seconds. Thank you.
I'd like to say I'm educated, but I'm an educator. I am qualified as a parent of a child who's in one of the public schools. I know what my experiences were. I know what her experiences were. How does that form my opinions as a board education member? Mostly because it helps people listen. I listen to parents. I had a lovely conversation with Nancy a couple of weeks ago about the new pre-k sort of kindergarten first grade program that we're planning this year. So it's all about listening to parents, to staff, to teachers, to students, to families, to community members about what we need, how we're doing it, and how we can do it better.
Thank you, Frank. Brian Dowdley, thirty seconds.
I have, I have no experience in education whatsoever. But I don't think it's a prerequisite for being on the board. It's Keith, he's an accountant. We have a finance committee. It's important. I'm on the school facility program design committee. I'm a musician, so I don't know what the band should be like in the art room. If you don't have to be an educator to be a board of education, we all have strong qualities that we can bring together and manage the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian Dowdley. Okay, so we're going to go back to our, we're going to start this time. Jeff is going to start this round off with, how could the district make up for lost instructional time in COVID and share equitable opportunities for all students now and in the period after the pandemic? Sixty seconds.
So one of its elements is helping out for lost time. My five year old started kindergarten last year and he didn't get a little kindergarten. And he, he's in first grade now. There's no way back. You can't make that up. You know, my oldest child is, you know, I hate to put him on the spot, but yeah, his behavior, his social relation, you know, it's important that we can get these kids the support they need. I know our superintendent has prepared the emergency budget that uses the corporate funding. It would take a lot longer than sixty seconds to explain, but that is full interventionist in the area specialists to address these things. But I don't think we can ever actually make up for lost time.
Thank you, Jeff Hart. And Elaine Maynard Adams.
I share Jeff's opinion. We have a mountain ahead of us that we're slowly trying to climb in terms of maybe a lot of our children have lost. A number of things that we're doing is increasing, and this is in large part thanks to COVID relief that's come into the board, that we're increasing performing after school programs. Some are programs for students, not just focusing on academics, but enrichment programs to help children settle down, get into routines with school, with school plans and we're partly doing parts in rep. As Jeff mentioned, we're dedicating a whole lot of COVID relief money to social and emotional issues, not just our students, but our staff. And this young man, by the way, has paid a tremendous toll on our staff. We're asking them to move around every day. And we are seeing they're struggling with behaviors of children, they're struggling with families, they're struggling. And we're doing our best to support them, but it's a tough time. It's a very difficult time in health.
Okay, and then Brian Dowdley.
I wholeheartedly agree with Jeff. You can't make up for lost time, but I don't know if we even know where we are right now. Our kids' commitments are never, and every person I have talked to has said, we did not expect this. You can read it in the paper. There's lots of fighting. There's lots of issues. Everybody's short on staff everywhere. And I'm just here in London. So I think we have to step back and assess where we are. And if we can't make up for time, we can use our time wisely and effectively to move our kids forward. So we need to at least start to bring the gap back down. It's a big gap. I'm sure we're going to get our testing results and go there tomorrow. What did we expect? Our kids have been out of school more or less for a year and a half. So we have to assess where we are, find the best ways to move forward, and we're having to bring the gap down.
Thank you very much. Would anyone from the first group like to address that question? All right, first group, we're back. Who's going to go first this time? Okay, Danny Cruz. The question is, if you're elected, are there one or two things, one or two things you would really love to see the board accomplish during your tenure?
So if I'm elected, things that I want to the board accomplish is, you know, to first fill that position as the director of equity and inclusion. I think it's very important that we fill that position to continue to move our school district and to move our progress to a higher level. Another thing that I, that I would do on the board or that I would want to see happen on the board is to continue to have student voices in our conversations. I'm a big advocate for that. I think it's important, you know, our schools, yes, we have our admin, we have our teachers, but the schools belong to our students. And it's important that we continue to involve those students in those conversations because they are our future. You know, they are the ones who are coming out of that school and learning something. So I definitely want to see students involved in it, whether that's on the board, whether that's just us asking a student, what do you think about this before we bring it to the board? And it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny Cruz. Okay, Keith Campbell.
Well, like I said before, D S L is really important to me. And I set my daughter's agenda to be part of the language program. So I would like to see a commitment to restoring that program in the schools. Whether or not I can accomplish it two days, two years, I'm skeptical. But at least I can get a commitment and at least I can tell you how far we've gotten. I definitely want to see that C E I position filled. I, like was said in the previous question, we can't make up for lost time, but what we can make sure that we do the best of the time that we have. And we need with, now that we don't have an S R O, we need more student services for mental health, for conflict, for early resolution, just basically behavioral stability, emotional stability, so that they can learn the best that they can. So I'm going to focus on that in the next two years.
Okay, thank you, Keith Campbell. And Frank Silva, one of your points, sixty seconds.
Thank you. I truly, truly just want to be sure that we have this, some laughter, some opportunity we could do, have some level of unity. And I think that one thing that I feel like we're not mentioning here, it goes that I want to be able to, on present, in this position, that the voice of the teachers are also being heard. They're the ones who are in the classroom of our students every single day and they have first hand to see what's happening. And I think that I want to be able to that we have an opportunity to hear them, to think people have to say that they have all the resources they need to be able to do their work and be able to move forward. The same way, I want to be sure that we acknowledge every single employee of the school system who's a part of the school system and make sure that they are fully addressed and served. And I want at least all of our principals. I think that there's a lot of, their presence in the message and I feel that they need to be here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank Silva. Would anyone from the second group address, one or two things you'd like to accomplish in the next two years? Jeffrey Hart, thirty seconds.
Yes, thank you very much. So I have some unfinished business on the board, including student activities on audit. It's been a long time in running this. Something we had to push to do in the middle of season when the organizers are so busy that some schools didn't get audits. But the purpose, Bob Green has to use his money to establish a program that's controlled by the school district. And then to use that money to build a program for the diversity hiring program, I don't know, for a second, well, in my hotel.
I'm sorry, the stop signs are.
He wasn't here for the diversity.
Oh, you want to use your, all right. Yes, absolutely. That's fine. Yeah.
The diversity hiring program that I'd like to use is a model I have in the one in Philadelphia. We need to recruit from among our student body, sending life around, especially in the elders to show them that career education is possible. Then you need to support them with higher rates type program while they're in university. And then designing incentives to make sure they come back, teach a new one and stay in one environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeffrey Hart. Okay, this is going to be the last question. It's going to go to group two. Is that correct? Okay, Elaine's up first? Okay. This is, we have three colleges in our town. Mitchell, College and Coaster Academy. Can you think of any way to collaborate with them to enrich our students' learning experience?
Thank you. That is an important question because we have three institutions that take a crack tax to real estate, but they don't, real estate taxes are considered. So how do we get them to run our, pretty open. We have a number of students, for example, from Coaster Academy, who are working as mentors to their, at the high school level, but also we add them from schools because of the proximity to Coaster Academy. Mitchell students have in their early childhood programs done a lot of volunteer in our schools. And Concall students, through their office of student volunteer services, has also been an active partner. Can we do more and we expect more from them? Absolutely we can. Should we do stuff more from them? Absolutely we should. Again, it's part of real estate. Women's paying many taxes. You should probably put a little action back into each. You should give a whole lot more back to your specific.
Thank you. And Brian Dowdley, same question. We have three colleges in our area. How can those students enrich our students' learning experience?
Sure. I think especially the Coaster Academy, Coaster family, my wife's retired, and the Coaster, there's a ton of possibilities. We used to have a program where cadets would mentor our kids. And we go back and we do a presentation at the Coaster. It was a very successful program. My older daughter, daughter did it. We have a research center, the news, and we have a Coaster that participated with our students, who were initially at a ton of facilities that we can use. We can partner there. We offer our kids college credit there as well as up on that hill for county college. There's multiple possibilities. I think the most important is use those students as mentors for our students to look up to. And I think that holds true for just anybody. Everybody needs a mentor to look up to.
Thank you, Brian Dowdley. And then Jeffrey Hart.
Yeah, so I'm thinking of early Concall, I always say this, when they have some classes in the hospital. I'm not of mind to find collaboration at this point. Educationally, we have a lot of things in common, but every year, you know, the mayor, the city goes and asks Concall for a contribution. They give us a piece, and embarrassingly small pieces. And I think, you know, I would prefer the best contribution they could make would be to pay their fair share and fund our struggling school system. So I'm in favor of showing up visibly and embarrassing them rather than asking for collaboration or going with our patent agents. Do that goes for the hospital as well. As long as the state of Connecticut privileges them with tax exemptions, the only leverage we have is embarrassment. So we should at least use that.
The audience is doing great. Okay, would anyone from the first group like to comment on how to use the colleges to enrich our students' learning experience? Okay, and it's time for closing statements. So we did opening statements from that end. Let's do closing statements from this end. So Jeff Hart, let's hear your closing, sixty seconds.
Well, thank you again, everyone for being here, Elaine for whatever it's been on. So. So I told that in my term as Board Vice President, and in these sixty second hours this evening, I've been able to demonstrate, you know, that what's important to me is having a vision for the future of the city, and not being, you know, intent to just get by or make do. Or, you know, and those things are important. I think I run a darn fine meeting, and I work well with my colleagues, but there is something else that not, not just everybody is willing to go out and learn and put ideas out there, and fight for them, and push back. So I hope to be back to do, to finish the work, and help you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey Hart. And next is Brian Dowey.
Thank you, everybody in attendance, and we would love to just talk about these. Just as a reminder, part of our team is on your name in here, and the article that was under the weather is coming. I am really hoping to get back in the board and continue what I've been working on. I mentioned some of the accomplishments of the board that I didn't get to because it's a short timeframe. Is our new, deeply learned building that we purchased along with the city, a lot of public schools purchased along with the city. It's one of the sixty preschool slots, which to me is the biggest game changer possibly for our city in a long time. We won't see the results for a long time, probably most of us will be on the Board of Ed at that point. But I'm hoping to work on projects like that to bring innovative ideas to our city, our kids, and more importantly, the entire community.
Thank you, Brian Dowey. And then Elaine Maynard Adams.
Thank you, and thank you to the young League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight. One thing I forgot, I forgot to mention in my opening remarks, is that I am a six-term veteran of the Board of Ed. So I'm a seven-term veteran, I'm all that consecutive. And I will say that this past two years has been one of the most exciting years I've had on the board. Knowing here, allowing colleagues to mention that our board was recognized by the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education for our achievements in the area of policy. Policy, Board members have three functions. We set policy, we act the budget, we hire and evaluate, and necessarily follow super talent. So to receive an award from Connecticut Association of Boards of Education is really very issue and cross. Other, two other terrific initiatives come to mind. The first is the Birth Aid Center, that's the heartland of the city, that's a particular beauty in my industry. I do believe that's a game changer for our families. And the second, that's kind of near to my heart, and I'm anxious to build on it, because we piled it in, you're willing to come and part in the first three.
Thank you so much. It's hard when you're excited about things. Okay, then Danny Cruz, sixty seconds.
I'm really excited to be, to serve on the Board of Ed. I'm elected in November, November 2nd. I am getting the experience, no other young person is getting the experience in London. You know, I am serving the Board of Ed, I've served on the Board of Ed now for three months. I'm also attending UConn at Great Point, studying education, specifically special education. And I want to come back and serve in London as a teacher. I'm really excited for the next two years, because I'm ready to make sure that, you know, the partner that lives in London, and making sure that our youth center is, you know, servicing our young students, our young New London residents, and making sure that we're providing services for them. I'm really excited to see where we go with our projects, with our new school projects, construction. I'm specifically at the high school since I just graduated from there. I'm just really excited to, you know, to do the work that we're working on that will work for our students, that we're teaching for our students, and based on our needs here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then Keith Kimble, sixty seconds.
First of all, thank you very much for listening to me tonight, and thank you very much for your questions. I'm also excited for the opportunity to be working with six other of my fellow citizens here. And they're, they're, um, it's really hard work that they've done so far. I'm definitely appreciative as a parent and child in the school system. But we hear a lot during the election from public officials and elected officials, and then they get busy with work, and sometimes they lose track of the constituents. As I said, communication for the districts and the parents is extremely important to me. I think it's timeless and quality have been relatively poor, depending by the things that they get across the district. So I'm gonna start first, I wanna be, I wanna lead by example. I wanna give a commitment to you that I will send out a bi-weekly newsletter to keep you informed on the decisions that are being made on your behalf. And I'm gonna hear from all of you, the stuff that you didn't ask me, the stuff I didn't estimate. Thank you.
And Frank Silber.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and thank you all for being here tonight. I really want to thank you, and thank you all for the work you have done. I really appreciate this opportunity, and I think that the opportunity for me to serve is really just to highlight that we've all been done, and all of the leaders, and all the teachers. But really, just again, find that love connection. I think that COVID, so much has been lost, and our connectivity needs to be reconnected again. So it is my commitment to make sure that we connect all together again. Thank you.
And now we can offer a round of applause to the people. Welcome everybody here tonight. And I'll start by thanking the candidates for running for office. I can only imagine how difficult that is. So I want to thank you very much for participating and contributing so much to modern democracy. Now thank the audience for being here. And thank all the voters in the city of New London for showing interest in this race. New London typically has about a tonset of percent of its voters show up for an election. The municipal elections we're hearing for, they're probably the ones that affect our lives, our families' lives the most. And so I encourage everybody to vote on November 2nd, and to encourage your friends and family to vote as well, because it does have a huge effect. As being said, the number of the voters, I welcome everybody here tonight for the second of two days. We had the board initiation earlier. And I want to thank the people who have put this together. Danny, you're at the church, who's been a big help. To help us in doing our sound systems tonight is really good. If anybody has trouble standing to use someone, let me know, we'll share our idea, okay? And I'd like to ask Stella for video to give us, and this will be available to be used on YouTube. We do ask that you expect the integrity of the event, and not just show soundbites of it, but to show the whole evening in its entirety. So audience members are now about to bring any campaign equipment into our discussion space tonight. We ask the audience to hold a pause or any vocalizations until the end of the debate. That gives the panels more time to express their ideas. The order of questions has been determined ahead of time by drawing numbers. We have two timers at the front, two hole of signs for the speakers so that they know how much time they have left and when it's time for them to stop speaking. Each candidate will be given equal time over the course of the hour. The first question will be given to the first four candidates. They'll have sixty seconds to answer that question. At the end of that time, if anyone else would like to address that question, just raise your hand, we have thirty seconds to do that. And you can raise your hand, you have thirty extra seconds, three times, through the course of the evening. Each candidate will be given sixty seconds for a closing statement, and sixty seconds for an opening statement as well. We'll start the closing statements with Eddie Long, but we will start the closing statements with Chris Wade. Great. So without further ado, I'm gonna welcome Eddie Long to the microphone for sixty seconds for an opening statement.
Hello, everyone. I'm very happy to be here. An election that has very good opportunities for the candidates to engage the people, and people to hear from candidates. I'm very thankful to all souls and the League of Women Voters and this chance to address you all. I am a member of the New London Arts Council, and I am co-chair for the New York Public Department of American Justice Education, which we call MARP. And very sincerely, we use the word people of our education to refer to racial injustice. I am currently running for city council because I am a busy person, and I love fighting for this community. But I think I've got a feeling, and I feel like all of the city councils could allow me to push the city into a little bit more creative approach to do things. I think we want to change the way of those businesses, and not just in terms of downtown economy. There is some approaches that we are used to taking when it comes to certain matters, and I'd really like to see those updated. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie Long. The next person will be Rashad Martin.
Good evening. Good evening.
Our soundbite says, "Six to eight inches of microphone light will work best."
I'll take that mic a little bit longer. So hello, everyone, thank you all for sharing everybody, I'm running for city council. And I have been, I ain't been a lifelong resident of New London. I've always cared about my community, and I've always cared about the youth in the city. I've been in the mental health field since 2013. I have an understanding of all different aspects of people, you know? And I just want to express that the love of my city will drive me to work for the city and the people of New London.
Thank you. And then John Sally, please. Sixty seconds.
Good evening, your time, hour, closing statements. Anyways, my name is John Sally, as I already mentioned. A lifelong resident of New London, educated here at schools, writing in high school and college, leading this administration. Spent twenty-five years working for the state of Connecticut, most of these probation alums are retired in 2012. I decided to dip back into politics, previously served on the London Board of Education for two terms, long, that's been allowed in a lot of years, twenty-two years, a lot of organizations, doing a very proud, active, serving on the city council, where we have been able to do a lot of wonderful things, to develop parts of J, spending millions of dollars on infrastructure, working, serving, I chaired a school, made a committee manager, hundred and ten million dollar high school renovation project, fifty-five million dollar investment, I don't remember what time it's at.
Thank you, John. Eric Hall, please.
Hello, I'm Eric Hall. Thank you for coming out, I think the council are doing the county, and they for stepping up to run. I think we get ahead of ourselves a lot, and in September, next week, September, I'll be the next council, and we're going to be the ones that have to solve the city's problems by just trying our hardest. I'm now a new member, I chose to come, I live here, my daughter, John, I work for Focus Engineering professionally. I am a project lead, who's managed forty million dollar projects with a budget to deal with various organizations. So I'm used to working with different organizations, I'm used to working with big budgets, and I'm used to fixing problems, and that's what I'm trying to do, I think. As a council, we have to get back to focusing on problems for New London, solutions for New London, versus focusing on big national political issues, and, 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 and. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric Hall. The next person is James Burke.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming out tonight. Thanks so much to all souls, church, for hosting us this evening, and thanks so much for the League of Women Voters. I wanted to take a moment to express my condolences for my dear friend, colleague, Smith, who lost him about a week ago. I know, longtime timekeeper and moderator, and thanks for allowing me to say whatever. So my name is James Burke, I've just finished up my first term on the city council. I'm proud of what we've been able to accomplish. We lower taxes two years in a row. As being said, I was not afraid to vote against budgets that I didn't believe funded education strongly enough. We passed the non-lapsing, but to encourage more responsible savings to give your buyer school. I also set up a little maintenance committee where we broke ground and got shovels in the ground and whole of our school construction projects. As being said, there's still so much more left to do. If reelected, I will make increasing funding to our, the Works Department, my biggest priority, and look forward to the conversations tonight. Thank you, everyone.
Next is Nancy Cole.
No, thank you. Sorry that I didn't get up, I'm recovering from a day of days, so I get to sit and hold my microphone. My name is Nancy Cole, I've lived in New London for thirty-seven years, and I have just come to be very worried about the city that I've grown to love in those thirty-seven years. I think we have to find a way of seeing our slate of signs on the city. The city has to be safer, it has to be cleaner, and we have to do something about our schools. Not exactly the subject for the council, but we can play a role in that. I am going to, Brian, and I'm beginning a counselor, and I'm hurting, because I believe in New London, I believe in its people, and I believe in its possibilities. We waited too long, I think the time is now. Thank you all.
Thank you, Nancy Cole. Next is Martha Marx.
Hi, everybody, thank you all souls for opening your doors and helping us with everything to League of Women Voters. We always do such a good job, and do so many important things for democracy. And then to the candidates. I served in 2002 for one term. I think many people know I'm a nurse, because I say it often, because it's something I'm incredibly proud of. I'm also a visiting nurse, so I'm in the homes of the people in New London every day. I always knew how important it was to have a nurse sitting at the table, but after what we've just gone through for the last eighteen months, I think it's even more important than now that we have a nurse sitting at the table. I knew how important public health was, how important mental health was, the money that doesn't go into all of that, that needs to go into that. So I'm honestly that person for public health, and for the people of New London, I have a very unique perspective when I get to sit in their homes, on their couches, and hear their stories. So thank you very much.
The next is Jocelyn Rosario.
Good evening, everyone. Maybe some questions would be here. My name is Jocelyn Rosario, and about, you can find me as the term, Jocelyn Rosario. I'm a Latina woman, I live with my husband to New York. And when I came to New York, I, I am a person of meaning, opportunities, and when I moved here to New London, it was because I see this city and I love it immediately. I am a multi-task person. I am a daughter, I'm a woman that always went to see good things in my family. I have a friend who's my girlfriend, my husband, at senior year. When I was in New York, I was designing for a graduate design, and when I moved here, I went to careers for business and nutrition management, and actually, I am working as a inventory manager in a company that is in this time. I asked for the opportunity to be a city also, because I am the person who likes to raise the voices. Thank you.
Thank you, Jocelyn Rosario. Next is Rhonda Cruz.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Dice, and I'm running for reelection. I am the executive director of the Center for Government and Community Learning Resource Center, known as the BOK Learning Center. And the reason why I would like to be reelected is because there are some things that I like to see completed. It is just remarkable that, close to ten years ago, that I was speaking about the community center happening here in New London, and... And when I think about being able to sit on the council and be able to see this started is just a great opportunity for me. But one of the other things is that working at the Brown Learning Center, I work with children. And it is also to see some of the children that I had the opportunity to work with and some of my staff on the board of ed, on city council, understanding the importance that if you want to make a change in this community or any community, you need to find out however, change the policy and see to make sure you understand exactly what it's on. And that's what I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Rihanna. Next is Ezra Dominkas Jr.
Buenas noches a todos. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Ryan, Dominkas Jr. I am a landlord and resident of City of London. I've also been educated for the past 24 years. Firstly, I am teaching at Benito Jazzy School as a bilingual social studies teacher. I've lived 100 years in the city. I've been just a passionate lover of the city of London because of everything we have, right? One of the things that I'm drawn to that Hispanic population is wrong. We're about 35% Hispanics living in London, and it's gonna keep growing. And why I wanna be reelected? Because I want to ensure that we continue to have representation of all those especially Latinx people who are present in Spanish. I represent everyone in the city, whether you're in the 30th district, the 70th, or the 1st. Now, my last thing I would say is I would thank all souls, church, for allowing us to be here tonight, and the women voters for also to sign our and my condolences to each of you who are here. Your call. So thank you.
Thank you, Ezra. And now, how do you look at it?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all souls, church, and women voters for coming to this event. My name is Kiel Peck. I'm born and raised here in London. I love London. I am in London. The reason why I'm running for city council is basically I'm ready for common sense. I once had a business in London. I was having a business here in Elsborough. I've been there for a year. That was my own business, a food distributing company that I ran very well. And if elected to city council, I'm going for real ideas that really will work, not just a lot of talk. I'm tired of seeing it happen in the city over and over again. I'm a team player, and I just love the city down in it. And, you know, if I get the chance, elected on city council, I'll do that and work very hard and make sure that everyone has a voice in the city, that everyone's voice is heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Rania. And next is Chris Wray.
Good evening, all. My name is Chris Wray, and I am running for city council. I am white, queer, complex, fully liberal, trans, trans women. I moved here in 2005 for love, and shortly thereafter, come and work for City of London. I am running for city council because I believe that City of London has a responsibility to take care of its people. And I think our current leaders are failing to do that. One in every 3.5 Londoners is living below the poverty line and gets 60% of city jobs where people do not live inside the city. Every year, we give the police department more money than our public works, rap department, library, human services, and senior center combined. It is time for me to think outside of the box, and it is time for me to think outside of the problem. I am running and ready to fight for New London so the Green Party is ready to transform the politics of London. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, so the next question's gonna go to the first four candidates, and then y'all can answer for 30 seconds if you want extra time. What is your view on the U.S. Coast Guard Museum? If you had to vote on a location, which would be selected, why? Eddie Long.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that question. Thank you for that question. I think the Coast Guard Museum is second table. Thank you. I'm not excited about it. As far as maybe you said about it in an art wing community like New London, I think we're gonna have the museum if it's not featured in the Coast Guard. But if we're gonna vote down that vote, I think that there are some houses that we need to do. I think that there are some priorities that we need to shift around. And I think the last point I think about is I understand that maybe the footbridge could come along with that. There's this grand vision, and I'm afraid that the footbridge may take the traffic from parking garage directly to the museum and bypass our downtown area, which I don't want to have so much of offer. So that's what I think of Coast Guard Museum.
Thank you, Eddie Long. And Rashad Mahdi. 60 seconds.
So, the Coast Guard Museum is supposed to go downtown London. I would have rather seen the Coast Guard Museum go at Fort Tormo, which I believe now is going to be the home of the community center. And in the community center, I would rather have incentive where, you know, there are more youth in the city that would use that center, not so far out. Because I've got many, plenty of parents and children who feel that the location of that is gonna be too far out from where they live. So, you know, the start of the Coast Guard gathering, the Coast Guard Museum going downtown London, I just didn't agree with that. But I only can see it in the city of London.
Thank you, Rashad. And next is John Sadie. Who's getting the museum? 60 seconds.
So, I personally would also like to see the museum in a different place. I just hear that downtown businesses believe that their businesses will grow after now, if the museum is down there. And I believe that probably is true. But I also believe if you bring in 100,000 visitors per year to the downtown area, that may create too much congestion. I would prefer to see it outside of the city district into the Fort Tormo area if there's still land available. And again, similar to what Mr. Mahdi said, I would prefer to see our community center in an area that is much more centrally located to children than we are supposed to be building this center for. I think the Bateswood area would be a much better area. The reason we'd be better is we have a lot of turf field, we have soccer field, we have dance courts. I think the Bateswood Park would greatly benefit from a $30 million infusion. So, thank you.
Okay, and Eric Hahn.
I think the Coast Guard Museum should go downtown. I think that Fort Tormo should stay property that's been developed and long and grandest. We, you know, the city, you know, it's residence in New London, so it can increase the rent of the city and provide a lot of good to the city. So I think trying to put a lot off and then more non-hackable and downtown Fort Tormo that is in state. Putting it downtown and then local businesses acts in anger. However, disagree that we need to spend $20 million to bridge that bypass those downtown businesses, you know. I think visitors seem to be because of our museum. Should go out and all grand and downtown and pay tax and restaurants and stores. And I think it's a good move for the city.
Thank you, Rania.
Thank you, my friend.
Yes, now, I need 30 seconds to...
If I can believe this.
Very, I don't think we will.
Excellent. So I just want to put this first to the right here first of all. You know, the money's gonna bring 500,000 people to the city of London for a straight. The Coast Guard has no museum in the nation we're gonna build here. Okay, we are not here. Okay, the National Museum Association privately is going to fund this. The $25 million was given by the state office. So what I see is people, thousands, hundreds of thousands of people coming to our city. Eventually, they're gonna come to our team. They're gonna come, and we're gonna be able to gain revenue from them. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, this is Kiel Peck.
You know, when listening to this about the Coast Guard Museum, this is the reason why I'm running. Because I'm sick and tired of people breaking down ideas that are gonna bring in revenue that's gonna shut my image and make our community look better. And for someone to say that the table might be after all of the funding was made and all the money was spent in our research, this is the wrong idea. And that's why I elected. I can work with the current team and those that are fortunate enough to get elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Rania. And then it's your Martha Marx.
Hi, see, I just wanna say that I'm that I'm actually really excited about the Coast Guard Museum. We've been waiting for this. We've been hearing about it probably for about eight years. Do I get a little nervous about climate change and how many more 100-year storms I know, 5-year storms? But there's a lot of really smart people that said that the design is gonna work where it is right now. And also, when you think we're gonna, people are gonna drive out, the construction of the parking garage, they're actually making the back exit. So I have to stop, but there's been a lot of smart people putting a lot of ideas that are gonna be positive.
You want another 30 seconds on that topic? Sure, go ahead. Eddie Long.
I understand the concept of bringing in 100,000 people to London, but I am worried for others who are gonna see when they get here. I want to remind everyone that table because it means canceling means waiting to be ready. And I think that's a good one.
Thank you, Eddie. This is the next question, then. It's gonna go to the next four candidates, which is James Burke, who will be first on this turn. The city council has to resolution that Sunday racism is a public health issue. What are the next steps towards acting on that resolution and face the public discussion of hope for the 2017 year's run?
Sure, so for what has been coming, we're proud of some of the work that, you know, we did. We rid military-style police vehicles from our community. We funded our youth services department and the general side of the city budget for the first time ever. And we got our award of education's budget for less than 12 years to further funding than it's been since I lived in the city. But of course, there's so much more work to do. Just recently, we approved the peer navigator program to be working with our police department. That has so successfully worked under Director Milstein's leadership in issues of substance abuse in the future. That being said, I do, yes, firmly believe racism is a public health crisis, and I will do everything I can to continue to be cool on this issue. And I also know that as a white man, I should look to people of power to lead in those conversations and provide support whenever I can.
Thank you, James Burke. And so Nancy Cole. And you.
This is one of the questions I think goes on our application. And it occurred to me that identifying racism as a public health issue is certainly a good thing. I think it probably is, but I don't know where it exists. I would like to see the city council formulate a strategy with concrete plans to move that issue forward. How long have you been identified as a public health issue in 2020? I think that it's almost become routine saying or a sense of urgency has been lost because we say, oh, it's a public health issue. Now we need a plan, a strategy, we improve, or enough just words.
Thank you, Nancy. And then Martha Marx. 60 seconds.
So, yeah, this is something that's very terrible. I see it every day in my job. And if you wanna see real racial disparity just come into our healthcare system, it's awful. I see it every single day. As far as what to do with the opioid crisis, the mental illness that happens during the COVID pandemic. And right now, we're still in the pandemic and we need to transition into an epidemic. And it's still gonna be affecting people. I think we all think everything's okay, but it's not. It's gonna be a hard winter. And we have the peer navigators, and it's fantastic. And I think it was on the D just looking the other day. And they're making $15.50 an hour. They deserve to have a living wage, the people that are doing those jobs, the people that are out to help in the opioid crisis. It's good, it's hard, and it's bad. And I've talked about it for a long time, but we need to put more money where it's going to really raise the people up because it affects the entire family.
Mark Lamarcus, it makes us just whether it's our radio for sixty seconds.
I believe this pandemic brought a lot of things that we learned in these two years. We were never hoping at something like this ever. And as a mother, I can tell you, it was so sad to see my daughter struggling with these issues. Like, mental health is one of the main topics we have around us right now. Believe it or not, there is people out there struggling to deal with these issues. I believe this is a conversation we need to put on the table and discuss thoughts as a team. And many things happen, but more than that is strategies that we need to put and make it on our side. Like to see how we can help elders. It's not my decision, it's not one person's decision, it's all decisions together. Thank you.
Good job, someone goes over. Now Rihanna does. Oh, no, okay, then you have thirty seconds.
I have one hundred and thirty seconds, but we think the questions are being covered.
If concerned, the city council declared racism to be a public health issue? And? This came in the audience. And so what can be the next steps implementing that decision?
So actually, it's different. And what I mean by that is we look at different things that are happening in our community. We need to think about how does it affect people of color? And the reason why, when you think about that, and make sure, the PT and R mission preschool, there's so many kids that need preschool experience, we're forgetting it. Then we have, and that was something that we worked on, making sure that we follow through. Like body feels, that affects everybody of color. And in our preschools, also making sure both people are safe. And that is important. So I just want to say, thank you.
Thank you, Rihanna. That's Rochelle O'Leary.
When you talk about racism being a public health crisis, I think about, first of all, Black Americans, who probably suffer the most when it comes to racism. And I just feel like it needs to be more persistent for Black Americans in London.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You can also just hit that, it looks like he'll pack his stuff over here, doesn't it?
Yes, you know, I take my head off to the mayor and the current council for to act on this. Of course, I just wish to start with the talking about it and actually action. We had a problem with racism in our schools and our police department. And we like to hold people that are in certain positions accountable for their actions and things that they say, things that they post, waiting to handle policies and things on the job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ollie. Chris Rate.
Yes, Paul, I strongly agree in the declaration racism being a public health crisis, but the declaration isn't enough. We need to put our money where our mouths are. We need to start reexamining and reallocating the way that our budget is funded. We need to prioritize the needs of Black and Indigenous, Latinx, Asian, and other people of color in our community in ways that we are not doing right now. That shift needs to begin. This city council and the incumbents declare it a public health crisis, but then continue to overly fund the police department and give our young people and our elders nothing.
Thank you, Chris Rate. Okay, Catherine, who's?
Jim. One of the things that we have done is we have related to providing money for what we have today. The school that's in birth today. I think when you see the disparities that are among Hispanics and brown people, I think education is key. There's a lot of other things that we have done also, again, in terms of working, about being able to, delivering, providing for our teens. Most of our students, the student population, is part of Black and Brown's race. That's who we have. So we best take it. And eventually, this is a process. It's not an end. We need to continue it. But it's a process, and we need one time to be able to do it.
Okay. One more round of questions. Are you listening?
Yeah.
This one. Besides the wind farm electric pole, where do you see the possibilities of raising the tax base in New London? What other industries would we bring in to help pay taxes in our city? We wanted that one.
So when I think about raising taxes, this council, this is what, the second, I've been up here one term, which is two years, but it's been a total of three years that taxes have been reduced. And so we're bringing in more revenue. I think this is something that we're working on right now. There's, when I think about working on it right now, I'm thinking about, oh, wow, I gotta take a minute back for a second. So let me make sure I explain this correctly. We are right now working with, thirty seconds? I actually took a brain lapse, but when I think about bringing in revenue, we have the revenue thing going on. And what is so awesome about that, that is additional revenue. So we have to look at what is being brought in, how it works, and these. And we need to also look at, if we're bringing in the postcard museum, building up downtown and the surrounding area to bring in businesses.
Thank you, Ollie. And Catherine, who's?
Could you just repeat the question after me, please?
Besides the wind farm electric pole, where do you see the possibilities of raising the tax base in New London?
Thank you so much. So again, what, we need money, right? We need money to do so many things, right? You need money, you're valued in money to go on vacation, you're valued in money to get better healthcare, you're valued in money. So if you don't have the money, we're not going to be able to do any. So besides all these areas, one of the areas that I see is what we're doing right now. Developers are coming into our city and investing in our city. That's what we're doing. And eventually, this is going on grandest, and it's going to increase the grants. Then we're not having, we're going to do all the things that we wanted to do, but without money, we can't do it. The other thing that I see too, that's valuable for us, is that we need to continue to invest into small businesses. Small businesses is what makes a neighborhood great. Small businesses, right? Small businesses will provide jobs for other families. Those families will pay revenue, and then the families are going to be able to come out of poverty, out of poverty, and come out of these middle-class shots. Okay, so it's all about us seeing what the future brings in London as we're doing it. It takes some time, but I'll tell you right now, we're moving forward.
And then, Ollie, that.
I think this is maybe a consensus, you know, that moving forward, you have to have, you have to innovate. And this is a great way of moving forward, moving our city forward. Win. So all the great ideas are viable, and I would like to see it happen. It's going to happen. I think the mayor and current council will have the awesome job of running pandemic to bring in some developers. And as the elected city councillor, who just adds to the team and make sure that all of these ideas and all of these developers have a place here in London. You know, again, it's all common sense, you guys. And, you know, let's not let anyone up here tell us anything different. Let's just pretty much use our common sense work. So the win, the win program, it's just a win, it's a win. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, that was right there. Chris Rate.
So when we think about increasing the tax base, one of the things I think it's important for us to rethink is the ways in which leadership in this city for decades have relied mostly on corporations to carry the load. That is short-sighted, and we need to diversify the ways in which we can expand our tax base. Like Mr. Tugendhat said, there are a lot of things to do with small businesses and fostering small businesses. The Green Party believes in this type of diversification, believes in bolstering the creation of small businesses. We're also interested in exploring things like the land value stance. An examining of areas in which current property owners are punished and penalized for fixing up their properties, while those are who don't fix up their properties are rewarded. There are communities highly, a variety of programs like this that we want to explore. And honestly, let's be, let's be smart with our money. Let's keep our jobs in the hands of new owners so that the money, our tax dollars, stay in the city.
Thank you, Chris. Nancy Cole.
I just wanted to ask maybe everyone here, kind of long time we've been talking about how we're increasing our taxes. For as long as I've been in London, probably before that. But I think the message that you see on our signs, safer between our federal schools, goes a long way in explaining how we're going to get people to come downtown, to have enough businesses so that they last more than six months for a year. And that's the way we grow the tax base.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy, and James Burford.
So yeah, we've done a lot to grow and revitalize recently. What that means, I think, is that the list must not be leading. Yes, we do need to get every seventy, ten, hundred property taxed about leaving the city just a couple square miles. But long-term, to fix the problem, it's going to take a long, it's going to take forty-eight percent of our land, a practice that we changed, that you took the mayor, came up to Hartford, testified on the title of reform bill last year. But again, it only stops the way we need long-lasting reforms, big generational change, so that children don't have the same problem. This was just mentioned in the building of the bar too.
Thank you, James Burford. Yes, Erica.
So I wanted to make one point there. This is the only record they access, property owners did. And so, you know, we have to make sure that the property that we have in the city is used the best extent of the base revenue from that property. Encouraging small businesses is the best way to grow the employment base in the city, which then turns people to investing in a property in the city, and that's how we're going to do it. Invest in artists, invest in small businesses, invest in people so they can create and employ those businesses.
All right. And Johnson?
From what I've seen, I saw our council proposed, like, example of the question states. Under the leadership of Mayor Massaro, we are pulling out and creating larger tax base. You see the Marshall J, it's one hundred and ten acres. You see down on Howard Street, it's going to be about two hundred acres. Mansfield Road, it was sixty under this last council. There's going to be one hundred and ten on Joy's side. New London, unfortunately, is small. So what we have to do is build, take the small parts of land instead of that, and we're giving all, creating residences. Thank you.
Yes, Mark Lamarcus.
We, fifty percent of our land is taxable. So just like Council of Work said, we need to start getting to Hartford and talking to Hartford more. When I'm running the council, I hope to go up to Hartford with the other councillors and make our voices heard. We need to testify more. We need to let the old posts on the West Side of Connecticut know that they don't get to get all the money and that there is something called Southeastern Connecticut because we are often forgotten. And if you know me and James, you know we'll make a lot of noise when we go to Hartford.
Thank you, Mark Lamarcus. Yes, Rochelle O'Leary.
So, okay, I grew up on Hensfield Street, and I grew up on my own public housing. And while everyone speaks about, you know, these developments, all of these public complex, you know, you know, people get there and ask them, hey, you know, how much is the postal lifters? $1,900. Well, from what I've seen, the people that I know can't afford it. You understand? And what's happening is their landlords are raising their rates also following the trend. Okay, so.
Very much, Rochelle. And what do you want for Eddie Lamarcus?
I agree with a couple of the sentiments that we're sharing here. I do like the cause of focusing on what we have now. I never retire to say that everything we need already has. There is something to say about the approach to bringing solutions from outside, but that often runs the expense of for Londoners. And this is what gentrification is. There needs to be a balance. Look outside when you have to, but there's plenty happening there between schools and unemployed Londoners. There are people who would love to contribute to taxes. We have to give them opportunities to do that.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, sorry about that. Catherine, who's?
I grew up in Crystal Avenue, nineteen years, public strictly. Right, went to all schools, graduated, became a teacher, and teaching for twenty-four years. The opportunities that I had were given to me because I went to school, I had great teachers in university public schools. And because of that, I was able to achieve what I have now. So what we're going to do, for London to cover this, we're going to need to make sure that we have revenue in schools and in our city. And what I think of the city is this, this is not about gentrification. It's not about gentrification. What we're doing is in the future, we have a former housing company, this new disaster, this, we're balancing it now. But we have to start somewhere.
Thank you very much. It is a little great, so I just wanted to lay a hand. In terms of climate change, I know people react like we're right. So I want to know two things. Are you, and I've got to come down twice. Are you a figure of the city having compost pickup with regular trash? Do we have compost bins?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, absolutely. I have compost bins in London.
Red box though, when I say yes. Hey, I already have a compost pile. Yeah.
I haven't been in London in two years. I'm not that old in that. Okay, the next one is, what do you think about putting in electric pole stations in all the city owned property so that people who have electric cars can plug them in?
Sure, but what I really like is free buses in the country.
That's a great answer. Try to give us.
Yes.
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 Yes. Enter the password.
Yeah, as long as we require the fire pump, it will also bring in electric stations.
I'd say, yeah, but also I'd like to see more electors, this is not a law, electors who are sort of in the town, you know, set the gas supply. It's financially viable in London. Sure.
I always love the electric, but if you do that, I'm back there even more. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask you how to do your closing statements, so we're going to start with Chris Rate. And each person gets one minute for their closing statement. So no one can press.
Thank you all for your time and consideration tonight. I am running for city council and I'm running to win. I am running as a member of the Green Party, alongside King Kendall from Portobet and Eddie Long from City Council. And we, as a party, are running to win. We are going to commit this November second, but we are also running to commit two years from now. We are committed to changing the way politics are done in this town. Fifteen thousand box-entire Londoners have registered vote, yet only two to, or three to four thousand vote in any given election. Democracy is broken here, and the traditional parties have accepted that for far too long. The Green Party is here to awaken, to speak up for the people, and we are hired and running personally to make sure that the people's budget is implemented. I'm not scared to fight over Londoners' needs, and I will go up against some powers. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And then, Ollie, that.
Thank you, you guys, for leading the runners for putting those forward tonight. And what I did, I just talked about change, real change. I talked about team. Already, it's already shown with the current members of my group and members on my group that we're all about soon. And I just believe, just use their confidence, because that's what I want. If we have our owners, that are all right here, and the things that they want to do, it's just a fair amount of make or miss things. And then we're going to be back here in two years when it's time for our mayor, or black our mayor, and they wonder why. So that's why I'm running, and that's why I put that in all I did on city council, so that I can remember about real change, that makes sense, and I will really help out everyone here in the city. And not just going to put a bunch of talk, that's going to leave us nowhere. Again, I got all this mess. So again, please go, Eddie Lamarcus.
Thank you, Ollie, and Catherine, who's?
Thank you once again, and I'm going to go to the board for this today. And I am seeking, you actually, because I see a shift happening for the betterment of our city, and I would take, and it would take someone who is bold, experienced, and has strong skills to bring it to fruition. And that has been a member of council for the past eight years, the last few that I've been the city council president, I've been able to, with Portobet, put together a team, and we can work, and that looks, you know, more science and talk about the budget. And the last thing in the last is this, you learn, it's more than a metaphor. If you don't think about science, a metaphor is right, butterfly, eventually it's a butterfly. A cat, it's very ugly, but at the end of all that, it comes out beautiful. And that's what's happening now. And I see it, and we're getting it done, and need to, and all of this happening, you need to follow through experience. Those who have ideas, those that have come together and been working together, are invested like me. I've been here for forty years, I'm in the class, I'm invested, I'm going to marry, I have a family, I'm just a wonderful school. Don't throw it away.
And Rihanna, who's?
My name is Rihanna. Guys, and I actually, for reelection, and first of all, I just want to say thank you to all the souls for opening the door throughout this pandemic, because a lot of things are not good, and that is very important. I want to think of the legal, the votes, and giving this opportunity to be able to address everyone. But as that, think about it, this year, this term, being on council through this pandemic, we were able to accomplish so much. And one of the things that I think is really important, that when we look at education part, we had the higher part. I really appreciate the fact that this council was able to make sure that kids were still be able to learn when they were at home, while their parents were working. We had so many families that we had essential workers that needed to be at work, and their child needed their resource. But also, one of the last things is, when we think about growing the brand list, I think about affordable homes. And I think about CLT, the fact that you need to get work on homes, and not be abused, back on the tax code by giving them to people who need homes. And thank you.
Justin, who's?
Right, if I get elected, I would like to continue with the process that we have right now because I believe in New London. I believe with the great people who are directing our city. And you know what? We can make things happen. And the things that are running in a good way, if we look over time, a couple of years ago, New London is that great in New London right now. I see how the mayor is fighting for us right now. Like, a couple of years ago, our taxes were high, and we maintained all these taxes low. Because of what? All the revenues that are coming to New London are helping us to stay with the taxes lower. And this is what is making London be great, less poor, all the small businesses do. Because this brings more opportunities, and more jobs to New London. If we all get together on this, I know we can get a better New London every year. Thank you.
Thank you. That's Justin, who's? Now, Mark Lamarcus.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. There's two things that I didn't get to talk about that are very important to me when I get elected. One of them is affordable housing. As all of these apartments are going up, it's wonderful.
One of them is affordable housing, as all of these apartments are going up, it's wonderful, the more people we have walking in our streets are great, but many people can't afford two thousand dollars for a two bedroom apartment. And so we really have to worry about gentrification, we have to make sure we have mixed income housing, and I will keep a razor focused housing, I'm in people's houses every day, and housing is what lifts up a whole generation, if you're talking about racism as a public health crisis, housing, redlining that happened is a big part of that. The other thing that I will do is do a commission on women, we have seen what this pandemic has done to the people in our community, and women, women of color, were hurt more than anybody else, because they're the people that have the healthcare jobs, and they're the people that have the service jobs. And the stresses that they're going with their families, I've seen it, I will work hard, and I will do a commission on women, and work with the child, the women and child agencies. So thank you, folks, for voting for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Nancy Cole.
Thank you all for coming. It's been, and then one evening for me. I just want, I want to tell you that in my job, my real job, I am a planner and scheduler in the energy center. So the way that I, in addressing problems, is the way I work, that I lay out a scope, that I tell resources to do, that I have a strategy, and I have a plan, and I have a solution. Sometimes that feels that the city, you know?
With the money.
Not you, I just want to. Sometimes it feels that the city doesn't quite have that methodology in hand, and I think I will bring that to the council in two seconds. Two big issues for me, and I'm on time to talk about them. Raise the level of homeownership, which is the greatest generator of wealth that people will ever have in life, sincerely to problem all of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy Cole. James, sir.
My name is James Carter, I'm in the ten Chapel Street, that's the one just down here, C H A P P E L L, my phone number is eight six zero nine two nine two seven, you can check to write that down, we'll get Carter outside. I wanted to take a minute to thank my colleagues, Preston Rortown, Artas, Kevin Booker, Jimmy Curtis Goodwin, which has been an honor to start with, that I am proud to accomplish the past two years. That being said, again, some other things that the future council will have to take care of. We are still negotiating the police union contract. The next council will likely decide the final business arrangement at the community center. Listen, most of you have a lot of friends in this room, right? And even some of the people that are closest friends, they don't agree about everything. Sure, maybe you agree about a lot, but there's something, the one thing that I don't pledge, again, that's why I don't know, you can find a rate on the city website, shoot me a text, give me a call, go down to the Washington street, have a cup of coffee, and hash it out. Will we ever agree about everything, no, but I would listen and be your voice on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, James Sir. So better advice.
New London has largely stayed of all large importance, thousands of million people remain in us, thirty five percent of our population, most of our house, that's the biggest barrier of generational development in the country in prayer. My proposal is that New London gives, first time, when we're occupying homeowners, a tax rebate on, you close ten thousand dollars, you invested your property, they get that off the tax, because we, we take that part. So if you buy a house, you live in it, you want to, you can put money into it, you can pitch it up, it will, it will help with, light apartments, it will help with store wealth, it will increase our revenues, and it will decrease the power of someone who lives around the city, you know, and reinforce the cycles of property. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. John said?
I'm Sherri, running for reelection. I'm proud, first of all, of our mayor, and our city council, the leadership that we have shown over the last two, three years. We, our borough city is moving forward, we are rebuilding all our public schools, we rebuilt Lady Dale's school, we really rebuilt Penny's school, we rebuilt Winter's school, we're also rebuilding many other Jacksonville schools, and the high school local projects are on time and underway. That's, that's the issue that he's doing now. We have created after twenty years, housing in parts of J, we're gonna see more housing down in the Shrewsbury area, we're gonna see more development in the Port Tumble, our taxes have stayed low, wider watering and buildings. I continue, I would like the opportunity, continue to serve you, to make sure that this progress continues to go forward, with the experience that I've had over the last five terms on Motorbed and City Council, I've served you. Again, thank you all for your support. We get some.
Thank you, John said. And Rochelle.
New London needs representation from every borough, not just one specific borough. And I say that because we have a whole school in the city here from every borough, and we're all breaking into this, I'm not alone. And if I, I'm willing to work with anyone from any borough here, because people from London mean the correct, in favor of the nation of the city government. Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle. And Eddie.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. You can learn more about me at longforcitycouncil.org, that's the number. The two party system's been hampering this country for too long, and now it seems like we have the one party system. What's that feeling for us? Have you been satisfied with your city council? Then you can send a message, don't just hold, you can send a message, that although we are diverse in appearance, and I am proud of that, we can diversity our days, and that comes from more than one party, more than two parties being represented on the city council. I don't want this job to be easy, if I'm lucky, I'll get it. When I was young, I was taught the easy thing to do is the wrong thing to do. The hard thing to do is the right thing to do. So I'm asking you, no, I'm encouraged, you go to polls and send a message, and send credit to myself, and keep to the board of education, so that you can do the hard thing, because that's what New London needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have one more call. Let's give them around to the last. Okay, so, I forgot the beginning to mention vote for one one. Votefor11.org is a place where you can go online and read, follow up all of these candidates, you'll find out where your polling station is, you can check your registration to make sure that you're still registered to vote. And the city will be posted on the votefor11.org site. It's a site that's national, and it's run by the Labour and Labour's U S. So you'll see more of that, and continue around all these years ahead. And thank you so much, you're phenomenal, Andrew, it's all for the American city, if it hasn't already, thank you.